Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, August 19, 2025. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following methods. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityoftaft.org, and they may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by myself, followed by an invocation from Pastor Joey Pittman. So if you'll stand, please. Hand over your heart, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God, we're so thankful for our city of Taft. For all those that serve in our city, we pray your blessings. God, that decisions that are made just help continue to make Taft just a great place. For those that move into our city, let them understand that this is a city that just loves people. So, God, we're asking your blessings on this tonight in the name of Jesus. Everybody said?
Amen.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
Councilmember Shavira.
Here.
All right, item number one, first item on the agenda is a public hearing for the General Plan Amendment 2023-01, the Sixth Cycle Housing Element Update, 2023 to 2031, and notice of exemption. So we have a PowerPoint and a presentation.
Yes.
Now, do I need? I don't need to hear the motion before the PowerPoint, do I, counselor?
No, she can give her.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Just want to make sure you guys can see the slides progress and that you can hear me.
Can we get the volume up a little bit?
Okay, great. Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Jenna Chillingarian. I am a senior planner at Precision Civil Engineering, and I was on the consultant team that helped the city prepare the sixth cycle housing element update, and that is what I am presenting to you all tonight. The city council action tonight is to conduct a public hearing and consider the adoption of a resolution approving General Plan Amendment Number 2023-01 to adopt the sixth cycle housing element update for the years 2023 to 2031, and find that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA set forth in Section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines. So what is a housing element? It is one of nine required elements of the general plan. It addresses housing production, housing conservation, affordable housing, and special housing needs. And the update is for the 2023-2031 planning period, which is also referenced as the sixth cycle housing element. The update process started a couple of years ago with the determining future housing need, which is also called the regional housing needs allocation. There was initial community input and engagement. Then there was the draft housing element writing and preparation. There was the first public review and comment period. There was the first state review and comment period. The housing element was revised a few times based on comments plus additional outreach and engagement. State review again with a substantial compliance notice received in June of this year. And now we are here at the adoption hearings. Planning Commission did hear this a couple of weeks ago, and now we are before the council tonight. The next steps after this, if approved, would be to go on to HCD, which is the Housing and Community Development Department, otherwise known as the state. And they would officially certify the housing element, and the city would move on into housing element implementation, progress reporting, into the seventh cycle housing element. The key components of the housing element update include these shown here. Analyzes future housing needs. Provides adequate sites for regional housing needs allocation, otherwise known as RENA. Analyzes government and other constraints. Assesses affirmatively furthering fair housing and identifies programs to achieve housing goals and objectives. Community outreach and engagement efforts are summarized here, and they are also in Chapter Four of the Housing Element. So over the past year-plus, there has been a project webpage. There was a community survey that was conducted with 235 responses. There were a few community workshops. Three were held at Taft Transit Center, and one was held at Taffy Union High School. There were stakeholder focus group meetings with 42 stakeholders invited and four meetings held. There were public meetings. I believe you have heard about the housing element over the past year and a half. So the Planning Commission, City Council, and Chamber of Commerce received updates. And then there were various public comment periods. There were four drafts, and comments were received and incorporated, as all explained through this presentation. And I do want to go on record to state that there was a clerical error found in Appendix A of the housing element. And since been corrected, it does not constitute a substantial change. No content of the housing element itself has been updated. But I do want to make that note on the record. And the revised or corrected Appendix A is available on the city website. Starting with the regional housing needs allocation. So the housing element must identify a capacity for 538 units at various income levels for the eight-year planning period. So that is shown here in this table. The left column is the income category from extremely low income up to above moderate income. The middle column shows the annual income levels that were calculated based on the area median income numbers. And then the number of units that the city must identify a capacity for are shown in the right-hand column. So a total of 538 housing units over the next eight-year period. Here's the adequate sites inventory summary. So the purpose of this is to meet RENA requirements through finding suitable and appropriately zoned land. The city's approach in this process was to look at vacant and underutilized land. No rezoning is required, and new developments, so large-scale developments primarily on the city's fringe. And then in terms of inventory details, the identified sites provide housing capacity for 336 lower-income units, about 1,100 moderate-income units, and over 2,600 above-moderate-income units. And so the city's inventory exceeds RENA significantly. So there are definitely more than 538 units for capacity identified. Affirmatively furthering fair housing is a new topic covered in this cycle's housing element. So if you are familiar with the fifth cycle housing element, AFFH was not yet a part of that cycle. So there was a new state law, AB 686, in 2018, that expanded the city's duty to AFFH. So the requirements for the housing element is the housing element must assess outreach, enforcement, segregation, poverty, access to opportunity, and housing needs as required by state law. And so in the housing element, it does all of that, and it identifies strategies and actions to enhance housing mobility, encourage affordable housing in high-resourced areas, improve place-based strategies, including conservation, revitalization, and preservation, and it protects existing residents from displacement. There's a chapter on housing programs. So the purpose of housing programs in the housing element is to identify specific actions to implement the policies and achieve the goals and objectives identified in the element. There was an evaluation of the fifth cycle programs. So the city reviewed appropriateness and effectiveness of nineteen programs in the fifth cycle housing element. And seven programs were carried over into this update for ongoing implementation. The six-cycle programs identified 52 across 10 areas, so significant increase in programs, and a lot of this has to do with complying with state law. There has been a lot of different legislation since the previous cycle housing element. And so the 10 areas of programs include these listed here. From adequate sites, housing rehabilitation, homeownership opportunities, rental assistance and tenant protections, removal of constraints, ADUs, fair housing services, homelessness prevention, housing production streamlining incentives, and central and west Taft neighborhood revitalization. So public, I do want to go over some public input that has been received since or during the August 6th Planning Commission meeting. We did hear from five individuals, and the public input centered on experiences of the homeless and low-income residents in Taft. And the key points generally raised were listed here. So the need for solutions for the urgent housing crisis and ensuring the needs of all residents are met. The desire for the homeless to be included in discussions about future, about their future, to have access to basic needs like public restrooms. The importance of addressing the lack of shelter, water, food, and mental health resources for the unhoused community. And a summary of requests, including better communication between city workers and the unhoused, and providing access to basic human needs and a safe place for belongings. Then I wanted to go through each of these and just discuss how the housing element makes an effort toward addressing these concerns. So the first concern related to solutions for the housing crisis or crises. So the objective of the housing element is to meet the RENA for 2023 to 2031 by providing housing for all income levels, and that gets back to the sites inventory and the housing programs. But overall, key actions in the housing element are listed here that I think are related. So encourage the development of new affordable housing units, preserve existing housing stock, rehabilitation and code enforcement, limit demolitions to maintain the number of available units, and seek funding for a first-time homebuyer program to assist new homeowners. The second point on public participation and inclusion of unhoused residents. So there was public input received throughout the housing element process, and the housing element was shaped by community feedback, which identified the need for homeless shelters and solutions to the homeless crisis. And key actions within the housing element, specifically Program 5R, include these items here. So biannual meetings will be held to discuss the state of housing and homelessness in Taft. There's targeted outreach, which will be conducted to engage lower-income and special-needs households. And communication will be improved through a dedicated webpage, social media, and translated materials to reach hard-to-reach households. Couple more. So this key concern was resources for the unhoused. So the problem is acknowledged in the housing element. It does identify people experiencing homelessness as a special needs group and recognizes the lack of local resources. The key findings stated in the housing element include the nearest homeless shelter is over 30 miles away. Transportation is a significant barrier for those seeking services. And city zoning permits emergency shelters in certain districts. And it does also identify some existing support. So organizations like the Mission at Kern County and Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance with regard to outreach services and legal aid, as well as assistance with mental health issues. And the last concern that was raised is addressing basic needs and communication. And so through the housing element, the city plans to make information more accessible through various channels, including City Hall, the website, and social media. And this includes creating and distributing handouts for housing rights and reporting violations. And then Program 5R is also central to this effort, and that was the one I talked about a couple of slides ago. And then in terms of safe place for belongings, while not explicitly mentioned, the element's focus on creating solutions for the homeless crisis, supporting emergency shelters, and acknowledging community feedback about providing safe spaces, I think, are related to this concern. So moving on to the last couple of slides. In terms of general plan consistency, there is a requirement that housing elements must be consistent with general plan elements. The city's general plan was comprehensively updated and adopted in 2010 and then amended in 2017. And in terms of consistency review, the housing element update is generally consistent with goals and policies of the general plan, including N-FIL, multifamily, mixed-use, rehabilitation, and energy efficiency. There are no amendments to the planned land use designations, and Program 9N of the housing element update ensures ongoing consistency. So in terms of next steps for HCD review, so the drafts were submitted to Department of Housing and Community Development starting in September of 2024, and then again in March 14 of this year, and then the last draft was submitted June 19. We did receive a notice from HCD on June 27 stating that the revised draft now meets statutory requirements and will substantially comply with state housing element law upon adoption and approval by city council. And the next steps would be, if this is approved and adopted, we'd send the adopted housing element and resolution to HCD for their final certification, and then the city would proceed with housing element implementation and progress reporting until the next cycle. In terms of SEQA, the housing element update is a state mandated policy document. The purpose is to identify needs and set goals, policies, and programs for housing. No changes to existing land use designations are proposed. There are zoning ordinance changes, but they are proposed for state law conformance. There would be no alteration to existing development potential. And the project is exempt under SEQA Guidelines 15061B3 as it would not have the potential to cause a significant physical effect on the environment. And lastly, staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and motion to adopt the resolution that approves the General Plan Amendment to adopt the housing element and find that the project is exempt from SEQA. And that concludes my presentation. Is everyone still with me?
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation and explanation. Recommendation is to consider a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving General Plan. Oh, yeah. Boy, am I glad you reminded me of that. There I was. Okay. See what you're up against? That's right. Oh, my, all right. After the presentation, at this time, I will open the hearing regarding the sixth cycle housing element. Anybody wishing to speak in support of or against, please step forward. I have a list of names here, beginning with James Carter.
Good evening, mayor and council members. First, I want to sincerely thank you for all you do for the city of Taft, your leadership and dedication to your community does not go unnoticed. Appreciate Mr. Bryant contacting you Sunday, asking for, you know, some extra patrol around the schools, first day of school, reminding the community members that, hey, we're back in session. Appreciate all the work you do for us. Here tonight, I'm about to speak to, speak to you guys about the current housing development project that's taking place in our city. I want to start by saying I'm excited about the potential growth of these projects and the growth of our community. Growth is can be a great thing. It brings new families, new energy, and new opportunities for our community. However, with this growth, also comes added strain on our public services. The area of the greatest concern of mine is the public school system we have here in Taft, particularly Taft City School District. Right now, our city's schools are bursting at the seams with the implementation of Universal TK program. Modular classrooms are already being installed or in the process of being installed right now. If you guys have the time, please go by Jefferson Elementary down there in Fort City. We have our first universal TK room set up there with kindergarten. It's amazing. So I offer the extension for you guys to come down and visit us there. At the recent Planning Commission, the presenter that was just presented right now discussed eight-year plan involving the development of 538 housing developments from the underutilized or the vacant housing development we have here. As the future plan, and also the future plans of Dustin Acres that we see the signs for construction, plus possibly the Sandy Creek Estates Phase Two going on. I would conservatively say we have about 1,000 new students within the eight years if we can develop those projects in our city, in our school district. This is real, let's see. And the reality, TCD will be, TCD will eventually be needing to build a new school and accommodate the growth. We are still operating the Connolly, which, have you guys seen Connolly? It's always a putting it together back and forth. It's not a hassle. It's always a thing that's on our concern for our yearly adjustments and stuff for our money. So as well, let's see, it's served us well, but the modern, and we need to modernize and expand student population. Will require space and updated resources. So I will close with this. As we bring more families to our community, we must also plan to educate their children. Our schools are the heartbeat of our community, and we need to ensure they're equipped for the future. So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up would be Abby Rodella.
Good afternoon. Community is a term we often hear, but do we understand its origins? The word "community" comes from the Latin word "comunis", which means common, public, general, shared by all, or many. It also relates to the Latin word "comunitas", meaning community, society, fellowship, friendly intercourse, courtesy, condescension, affability. In Old English, the concept of community was linked to fellowship, union, and the public sphere as distinct from rulers or clergy. The old French term "communité", which closely resembles the modern usage of community, similarly defines it as a collective of everybody. Sociologist Anthony P. Cohen suggests that understanding community involves two interconnected ideas. First, that members of a group share something in common. And second, that this shared aspect distinguishes them from others. The city of Taft has expressed that the purpose of its housing element is to establish policies and programs to address existing and projected housing needs. When I think of Taft, I think of a community that instills in its members, both housed and unhoused, a deep love for the city and a shared aspect of pride throughout the years. However, this shared pride exists along harsh realities. The lack of affordable housing, along with other social realities, has forced many individuals to live without homes, a situation that cannot be overlooked. When we discuss community and the concept of the common people, are we making genuine efforts to include all members in our housing initiatives? Or are we sidelining the unhoused as an inconvenient part of the narrative we hold about what the city of Taft is and those it represents? Are we truly fostering a spirit free of biases, prejudices, and stereotypes about the unhoused? Despite any societal biases that we may hold, the unhoused are still part of our community, and leaders hold a moral obligation to treat them as constituents, deserving of respect and support because they are constituents. Are we genuinely pursuing small government by seeking transformative and holistic community solutions to these issues? Not Band-Aid solutions? Not Band-Aid solutions. Are we selfishly following the rhetoric of a man we see on our TV screen, sitting in his office chair? Or are we guided by deeper principles of a man on the cross who we so claim to believe in? As it is written, "Is it not to share your bread with the hungry and bring the homeless poor into your house? When you see the naked, to cover him, and not to hide yourself from your own flesh." We are reminded, "For I was hungry, and you gave me food; I was thirsty, and you gave me drink; I was a stranger, and you welcomed me." Whoever oppresses a poor man insults his maker, but he who is generous to the needy honors him. Furthermore, "For there will never cease to be poor in the land; therefore I command you: You shall open wide your hand to your brother, to the needy, and to the poor in your land." When the crowds ask, "What then shall I do?" The answer was clear. Whoever has two tunics is to share with him who has none, and whoever has food is to do likewise. This is not simply a problem or an issue that we do not know the answer to. If we don't have the answers, then let's do our research. Let's collaborate with community members, grassroots-led organizations, and clergy, and those who are unhoused, to create accessible housing policies for all residents, including the unhoused. By doing so, we can embark on a path towards healing and true community. Remember that words do not have any meaning until they are put into action, and Band-Aid solutions are not long-term solutions. Thank you.
Young lady, just how old are you? You may ask her that question.
Um, how's that relevant?
Well, I was impressed with your ability to read and speak, so it was a compliment. However, if you don't want to share your age, you needn't do that. You may sit down. Next to speak would be Jerry Casto.
Distinguished members of the City Council, I'm here before you because I am, or was, part of the homeless community itself. I've lived in Taft, I was born in Bakersfield. Three days old, I came here. My family's been here since nineteen sixty-eight. Well, I'm the only one left now here in Taft. And I just want to ask one thing of the members tonight, and it's for a piece of my life, how I became homeless. I was renting a house with my brother from another brother-owned house. He said he was going to sell it. I thought I had a month, five days. I had to have all my things in a suitcase and ready to go in five days. It's quicksand. To become homeless, it's more expensive to live without a home than it is to live with a home. You have to, you can't buy things that are, other than ready to cook, you have to cook it now. And I just ask you to, ask you to think about the fact that, how fast that can happen and how easily it can happen. My family was gone. My friends, I was too ashamed to come to because I thought, I'm homeless, this is the worst thing in the world. But in that homeless community, in that homeless community, I found the best friends I ever found in my life. Somebody came to me, he met me the first time. I had been homeless for three weeks. I pretended I was camping. I was home, it's Taft, my home, always has been. And, but, met me, I'd been on the streets for three weeks, handed me three dollars, he said, "Here, get something to eat, I know you're hungry." This is somebody who didn't have anything either. Some of these people will do anything for anyone. They see somebody that needs something, they'll help. We just want to be part of the community. I mean, I still spend my time with that community because they're my closest friends. I remember talking to a friend before I became homeless, and she was homeless. And she was telling me that, about it, and I said, "I don't think I could survive." But I did it for a year and a half. Had to. It wasn't easy. And I won't go into the, where things, blaming people for anything or anything like that is just, because they were just doing their job. But I just want everybody to know, just think about the fact that, just think, five days, you have to get everything out of your house. Everything you can keep has to fit in a suitcase. And where are you going? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, Cindy Brett Schneider, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Very good.
First of all, I want to thank you for listening to my friend Jerry. We can only learn who people are and what their lives are like, what their needs are, and discover and find ways to help when we listen. My name is Cindy Brett Schneider. I'm a certified lay minister at Taft United Methodist Church. Our church was founded in April of nineteen ten, so we are deeply grounded in the Taft community. We're a church of community service and actively engaged in outreach in the community through our clothing closet, Salvation Army, Waste Hunger Not Food pantry, and community classes for their, for our immigrant community. Our food pantry has become a place of listening for our unhoused community. We hosted two listening session dinners to hear and learn from our unhoused community. We heard the struggles of living on the streets, in the hill areas, or in their vehicles, being in the cold and in extreme heat, the need for food when you don't have a refrigerator or a way to cook, lack of water showers in restrooms, the need for places to store belongings to be able to access physical health and mental health services, the need of help to apply for food benefits, financial assistance, medical benefits, and much more. Care and housing is a God-given right grounded in human dignity. Caring for our unhoused friends is not an optional act of kindness, it is a moral imperative. John thirteen thirty-four through thirty-five, "I give you a new commandment: Love each other, just as I have loved you, as you also must love each other. This is how we will know you are my disciples, when you love each other." A writer, Ron Hall, wrote this, "The biggest misconception about the homeless is that they got themselves into the mess. Let them get themselves out." Many people think they are simply lazy. I urge them to make a friend at a local mission and find out how wrong these assumptions are. We don't have a local mission, but we do have food banks where people gather. So come by, have conversations, learn the needs and desires directly from the people. We need to open our eyes to see the way people, people, to see people the way God sees them. People who cross our path, or we cross their path. Being willing to acknowledge people, listen, ask questions, and listen again. Be open to hear the needs. No, you and I may not have quick solutions, but we can make a difference in lives in this community. We can and should work together as a community, find solutions. Colossians three thirteen through seventeen, "Be tolerant of each other, and if someone has a complaint against anyone, forgive each other, as the Lord forgave you, and also forgive each other. Therefore, as God chose choice, holy and loved, put on compassion, kindness, humility, gentleness, and patience. And over all these, put on love, which is the bond of unity. The peace of Christ must control your hearts, the peace into which you were called, into one body, and be thankful, people. The word of Christ must live in you richly. Teach each other, and warn each other with all wisdom by singing psalms, hymns, and spiritual songs. Sing to God with gratitude in your hearts. Whatever you do, do it in the name of the Lord Jesus, and give thanks to God the Father." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Christine Gillum.
I'm Christine Gillum, longtime Taft resident. Over the last year of volunteering at the food pantry at the Taft Unity Methodist Church and distributing clothing at the Need Center, I have become much more aware of the many problems faced by the unsheltered population of our community. These problems range from insufficient human services, lack of adequate transportation, unstable housing, and lack of provisions, just to name a few. The housing element, which you will be voting on later tonight, correctly identifies a number of these barriers in effectively overcoming homelessness in Taft. For example, on page one oh seven of the housing element, it states, quote, "Taft has many functional homes, people, those who can move from couch to couch, home to home, shelter to shelter, by staying with whoever take, whoever will take them in." The Bakersfield-Kern County Homeless Collection believes this is an unidentifiable problem and increases the likelihood that this population will end up without shelter, end quote. This unidentified problem, as the housing element states, is likely to result in an undercount of the number of people who are without homes. The variation in numbers can also present a significant challenge during the very competitive grants application process, which is an essential source of funding for local providers in obtaining badly needed food. A second barrier that the housing element recognizes is the distance from, from the nearest transportation, transitional housing, bridge housing, or even navigation center, as you heard earlier in the video. On page one oh seven, it states, "The nearest homeless shelter is in Bakersfield, more than thirty miles east, and it is difficult for this population to arrange transportation to the shelter if needed," end quote. But the problem is, even if transportation is given, the, the access to the center would not automatically be accessible. After locating a bed at one of the centers, it can take two to three days until a person can be allowed to move in. Another obstacle that housing element addresses is the service providers. This report states that, quote, "Taft has a network of service providers who work together in coordinating their limited resources to meet the needs of the unhoused," end quote. From the list of organizations on page one oh five, as serving the needs of the homeless, one of them, which provided shelter only to victims of domestic violence, has seriously curtailed its hours of opening and is now advertising for a grant writer in order to return to its services of their previous level. The other, a fresh rescue food pantry, has closed indefinitely. On page one oh three of the housing element itself, it states, quote, "There are no shelters in Taft." And on page one oh five, quote, "Currently, there are no housing facilities or services for homeless individuals in Taft," end quote. From the various listening sessions, meetings, and day-to-day interactions that I've had with unhoused, the unhoused population, it is very apparent that this lack of available facilities increases all problems experienced by the unhoused. We are glad to see that the housing element recognizes these barriers, and we are optimistic that with more resources and funding, a path for new ways of addressing the issue of homelessness in Taft can be provided. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up is Louis Gillum.
The programs outlined in the housing element represent important and welcome first steps toward overcoming the barriers we've heard about this evening, and they are the result of very constructive dialogue between the Planning Commission and the community at large, conducted through the public comments process over several months. We strongly endorse Programs five through G, five through G, which will amend pertinent zoning ordinances to permit a navigation center, bridge housing, low-barrier navigation center, transitional housing, supportive housing, and single-room occupancy units, with that zoning being slated to happen by the end of the fourth quarter of 2025. This rezoning removes some very important barriers. Also, Programs five R and eight A propose joint meetings with service providers. We are pleased to have learned recently that this process is already underway and in its formative stages, and that representatives of local food pantries are now being invited to join. We, to be truly communitarian, the commission should include also local clergy and representatives of the populations that local service providers serve, as long, as well as volunteers from community-based organizations that, that are not necessarily connected directly to those services, but provide the volunteer labor for that. This would have the advantages of monitoring and responding to changes in the homeless population, and changes to funding, services that are accessed through these organizations, and that are available or in levels of availability of those resources on an ongoing basis. Secondly, it would be an opportunity to study repurposing of existing stock for transitional or bridge housing or a navigation center. With this private-public-community-based partnership in place, Taft would be well-prepared to actively seek funding from existing or new sources to construct or convert from existing structures, transitional housing, bridge housing, and navigation center. Those kinds of things that would include access to showers, bathrooms, and locker space while the facilities are in use. Faith in the Valley is one of the most active federations in the statewide organization People Improving California Through Organizing, or PICO. As such, we can do two or three things. We could help identify existing or vacant or underutilized buildings in the community that might be suitable for renovation and conversion into shelters. We can help identify and access various funding sources to support shelter acquisition and operation. And third, we can facilitate partnerships with other organizations, such as faith-based groups, local businesses, and community leaders, to explore potential locations, secure funding, and gather resources for shelter development and operation. It's a truism that staffing is the most expensive cost in any operation. It's also been past experience that staff salaries in local privately-operated social service organizations have proven formidable. Faith in the Valley has already assembled teams of volunteers who have recently begun maintenance at Ford City Park and for food distribution projects. We offer our time freely, and we would not accept pay even if it were offered. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Sandra Popejoy.
Hi, I'm Sandy Popejoy, nine three two six eight. Now you've heard about the harm, barriers in the, in a plan. I'd like to speak with you about how this plan can overcome the barriers presented earlier. First, while the point-in-time report provides some excellent information and data, the undercounting of the unsheltered folks in our community is of major concern. The PIT report of 2024 states that there are thirty-nine people who are unsheltered in our community. However, I've spent many hours serving their needs through volunteer work at the Need Center, and I have extended assistance to individuals living in tents, in inoperable mobile trailers without water or electricity, in inoperable automobiles, and even holes dug in the ground with branches over the top for roofs. dug in the ground with branches over the top for roofs, and actually, all kinds of makeshift shelters. And I know the count is much higher. Of course, an accurate count is vital to assess and fulfill the unique needs of this population, which can be done through ongoing and direct dialogue with our homeless citizens, through meetings with service providers, community reps, and the Bakersfield-Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative, who is responsible for the PIT report. Second, the Housing Element lists service providers to meet work, excuse me, to meet the needs of the unhoused. Many of the listed agencies no longer operate, and some of them for a very extended period of time. An example of this is the Needs Program, which operates with the best interest of the folks they serve by providing food distributions as well as used clothing, and helps pay utility bills until the grant money is used. However, the Needs Center is listed as providing shelter, and this is inaccurate. An accurate list of service agencies and resources available would minimize the confusion about how to access the emergent needs. And I believe that tapping into more support from United Way would be another way to foster collaboration between agencies, tap into funds for emergency shelter, and break down barriers that would better serve our unsheltered neighbors. Third, we want to communicate with the Taft Police Department. We appreciate and value the service that TPG provides to our community, and we would like to partner with them to address concerns, and there are many, to support you in solving them, all while protecting the integrity and safety of our unsheltered citizens. So to summarize, it is our hope that the city would assist in developing a local navigation center that will act as a one-stop shop to assist Taft's unsheltered and underserved citizens in accessing resources under one roof, obtain some respite, and begin the process of getting back on track, thereby eliminating many of the barriers addressed tonight. We look forward to collaborating with you, service agencies, and our unsheltered friends, so that we can bridge the current gap in assistance and resources. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Daniel Rodella.
Danny Rodella, Faith in the Valley, 93268. Solutions aren't truly solutions unless they're put into action. As community members already stated, we welcome the rezoning of land use, the formation of a homelessness commission, and the inclusion of underrepresented voices to have a seat at the table. Each of these initiatives represents a barrier removed. However, the final barrier, the most difficult one to overcome, is funding. To address this issue, I'll highlight funding sources that could be crucial for implementing the housing programs and the housing element you're adopting today, provided there's sufficient political will. A, California's final 2025 budget allocates $500 million for homeless housing assistance and prevention for fiscal year '26-'27. B, Assembly Bill 736, if passed, would provide an additional $500 million for community anti-displacement and preservation programs. PICO California and Faith in the Valley strongly endorse this bill and urge the city of Taft to do the same. C, the Community Development Block Grant mentioned in the Housing Element offers flexibility and empowers communities to design and implement strategies tailored to their specific needs and priorities. D, through the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program, the California Department of Healthcare Services allocates over $1 billion in funding to county behavioral health agencies to address the immediate housing needs of individuals experiencing homelessness who have severe behavioral health conditions and substance use disorders. E, a cooperative agreement between the city of Taft and the county of Kern could establish a satellite center in West Kern funded through Assembly Bill 179, which provides support through June 30, 2027. Let's be honest, though. Some believe that increased policing resolves the homeless issue, but many sources provide a different perspective. The cyclical churn between homelessness and incarceration is estimated to cost taxpayers $83,000 per person annually, far more costly than providing treatment and housing. A Florida-based study found that the cost of repeatedly arresting 33 recurrently homeless individuals is approximately $171,000 in Seminole County each year over a decade. In LA County, it costs an average of $548 per day to incarcerate a person in a mental health unit compared to just $207 per day to provide housing and community treatment. The Thrive Grove Navigation Center is an example of collaboration and investment between the city of Thousand Oaks and county of Ventura and private sector partners to implement housing programs that actually address special needs and combat homelessness. The county and city ensure residents have access to essential services and share the cost of the facility's construction and operation. The State of California Interagency Council on Homelessness awarded the city $5.8 million in grant funding to help provide services for people experiencing homelessness. In fact, IKEA of Thousand Oaks also donated various resources while volunteers helped complete the facility. By offering services like temporary housing meals, case management service, and job training, the city can play a significant role in reducing the financial strain associated with homelessness on the broader community, and can also decrease the need for crisis response services, emergency healthcare, and other public resources. Job training programs can lead to greater economic independence and contribute to the local workforce. The center's focus on creating a safe and supportive environment for services may reduce police calls related to homelessness. This approach would allow police resources to be redirected towards the concerns and towards other concerns and improve community relations between law enforcement and individuals experiencing homelessness. Additionally, it encourages a collaborative approach to addressing and minimizing homelessness. Faith in the Valley's partnership with the county of Kern to enhance parks in Ford City and Valley Acres shows how we can collaborate with local government. Addressing homelessness is a moral obligation, and we must honor the dignity of our unhoused neighbors. Through the Housing Element update process, we engage the community, resulting in the creation of Program 5R, Public Participation. This effort reflects our commitment to working with the city of Taft and the community on housing issues. Pursuing meaningful solutions to the significant community concern, as highlighted in the survey results mentioned in the presentation, is also in your political interest. Our question this evening is straightforward. Will you commit to exploring this plan and research material with us in more detail before the end of October 2025? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That is all I have on the sign-up list, wishing to address the council. Therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the City Council of the city of Taft approving General Plan Amendment Number 202301 to adopt the six-cycle Housing Element Update 2023 through 2031, and find that the project is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, as set forth in Section 15061B3 of the CEQA Guidelines.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Mayor Pro-Tim, you made the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really a question, just to clarify for myself and for the public, on the presentation here. Jenna, is that correct? On page seven, the identified needs, so just give me an idea, are those identified, we need 538 total housing units to meet our local needs? Is that correct?
This is through a lengthy process from the state to the council of governments. And so there's a bunch of math that was done, and they allocated 538 units to the city. And this means the city needs to provide the capacity for 538 units based on, you know, the lengthy methodology and calculations within the next eight years, starting 2023 to 2031. And so through the Housing Element, through the site's inventory specifically, we're showing the city, yes, does have capacity for 538 units at these varying income categories and beyond. So we were able to show that we have thousands of units in our capacity for housing.
Yeah, when you say units, you see there are developed units existing today, or the zoning for those units to exist at some point, right? If my math is right, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of like seven, seven and a half times the space that's available, or that's required, that 538 number, seven and a half times that is what's actually available in inventory. Is that correct?
Yes, with current zoning, significant capacity.
Okay. I was also really intrigued by the fact that less than, or about 12% of all the identified needs in this area were folks who are at or below the poverty line in this area. I was genuinely surprised about that. I was even more surprised that the vast majority are in the upper quadrant, or whichever domain that is. And I think that's a good indicator for the available wages in this area. Like, that's showing me that, hey, this is where the demand is, the people that are at or above this area can support that. Is that correct?
I'd have to pull up the methodology from the Kern Council of Governments to confirm. But there has been, I think generally across the state, an increase in that above moderate income category for units from the fifth cycle to the sixth cycle that is a common occurrence in many cities.
Okay. I was just genuinely intrigued by that. I would not have expected that. I would have thought that the majority of those in this particular area in California would have been more toward the middle or the lower middle than, and honestly, you've got three-quarters of the identified need in the upper two of five, so upper 40% of the identified requirements. That was, it's encouraging to me that the available wages are here to support housing in those areas, not necessarily for the folks who are kind of in the bottom end, you know, obviously, there's a need, very clearly, when it comes to the unhoused or those who are couch-surfing, or however you want to, you know, put it, that's there. I was just very intrigued at how, overall, it's a relatively small percentage from the larger group. I would have expected to be slightly higher.
If I may interject as well, I mean, it's no secret that we have been looking to the Fed for quite some time to make adjustments on the interest rates, and as interest rates are adjusted, that line that you're referencing that is within the study will move. It's affordability, okay? That line will move. So, good observation.
That's all the questions I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and thank you, Jenna.
Thank you very much. Councilman Cryer, you made the second, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of reading here, going through the agenda and stuff. It took a lot of time to go through it, a lot of information, a lot of work went into it, and a lot of statistics and numbers to go through, and it was well put together. And thank you for doing all that. It was simpler to understand it, but yet it made it a little more complicated on certain things. But it's hard to please all people in here, but the numbers look good. Like Mayor Pro-Tim Bryant said, that the percentages and stuff there, it speaks for itself, pretty much. And I think a lot of work went to it, and I think it represents what I believe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Shaver, any comments, sir?
I just want to piggyback off of Councilman here. You know, this is a lot of information, and this is the type of information that we need to help us to make a better decision. So we appreciate your insight. We also appreciate you guys' due diligence in working with the state and providing this information. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Waldrop.
I think this is a learning experience to get better as we go, but so far, I'm proud of everybody. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It is no secret, matter of fact, Mr. Rodella got down to the nuts and bolts in its financing. Everything costs money, all right? Ideas don't cost money. Ideas are fun. Ideas are easy. We can discuss them, and we can massage them, but until there's funding, it's an idea, okay? There are opportunities. Opportunities will come with lower interest rates. Opportunities would come with job opportunities. It is no secret that the state of California just got the dubious distinction of being tied for the highest unemployment rate in the United States of America, and that is a definite result of policies coming out of Sacramento. I mean, that's it. And that part of it is hard to argue with. We do everything in our power, I can tell you from our point of view, to bring job and economic opportunities into our community, because after all, all essential services that come through government still have to be funded, and we have to make efficient use of our monies. There are other tools that are coming from Sacramento, ADUs, you know, accessory dwelling units are one of those things. When one looks at the possibility, like she talked about during the presentation, of how many units we could possibly place within the city limits, city path, and some of that has to do with ADUs. Those, like I say, the opportunity for that came out of Sacramento as a way to help solve the housing crisis. So there is still a need. There will be a need. There's a need for funding and opportunity, and there will continue to be that need, but we will definitely look into and reach out to try to take advantage of any opportunity that this community, that this city could have, to try to effect the scourge that is homelessness. Absolutely. All right. That's all I have on that. So, any more discussion, gentlemen?
Done here.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaver?
Yes.
Mayor Noor?
Yes. And that passes on a 5-0 vote. I want to thank you all for coming and speaking with the council this evening. This is your city. This is your community. This is your government. Obviously, it's your concern, so thanks for being a part of it. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is item number two, citizen requests public comments. We have one individual wanting to request to speak to the council. So, comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Dr. Kathy Orne with the chamber. Always a pleasure to have you, ma'am.
Well, thank you. I certainly know how to clear a room.
You filled it before you cleared it.
It's a gift. Thank you very much for giving me the chance to speak. I want to make all of you aware that the Chamber of Commerce is going to be offering a gala evening for Oyl Dorado on Saturday, October 18. You may get your tickets at the Chamber of Commerce, 400 Kern Street, and they are $85 per person. This gala is going to be a little bit different. I have told some of the people that are more directly involved in planning it, this is not your mother's gala. So it's going to be quite different. There will be wine tasting, tobacco trying. I don't know what that is. That's probably not what they call it.
Tobacco spitting, part of the sales competition?
Enjoying.
Dabbling?
I don't know. Cigar what?
Rolling.
Cigar rolling?
Yes.
Well, that does sound better than tobacco trying, doesn't it? Thank you. Thank you, Eva. And we will have wonderful hors d'oeuvres that will be offered. We will have a real, what do I want to say? We're going to have a silent auction and a real live auction. So there'll be lots of gifts, lots of things there to do. We invite all of the people in our town to come and be part of that fun evening on the 18th of October. So I just wanted to remind all of you, tickets are on sale. We'd love to see you there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Kath. Next item on the agenda, item number three, council statements non-action. Councilman Shaver, I'll begin with you, sir.
Well, I wish everybody would have stayed. I think all items are important. One's not better than the other, so I sure wish everyone would have stayed to listen to the rest of it. First of all, I'd like to, as we all know, Mr. Ron Jordan passed away, and I just want to let the public know, I worked with him. Not only did I work with him, he was a mentor, just a super-nice guy to work with, and it was just an unbelievable honor to work with him. He was super funny. He was a great smart aleck, but just a wonderful human being, and I sure do appreciate him. I'm going to keep it at that. That's all I got this evening.
All right. Very good. Councilman Cryer.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to echo the sentiments of Councilman Shaver on Ron Orne. Yeah, he's been around forever, around Taft, and he's been involved in a lot of different business ventures. I know he touched a lot of lives. He's involved with the director-
He's involved with the directive rec, and also in the planning commission. He, he, uh, he's a well-respected, uh, gentleman here in Taft, and I offer Kathy, uh, Orne and his fam- her family, uh, mark our condolences for everything. And, um, on that. Another question I want to touch on is that there could be 200, up to 260 million dollars more to help the homeless, or help the low-income, or help the needy, but our governor wants to go ahead and use that money to have a special election, to go ahead and, uh, gerrymander California even more, uh, to eliminate four to five of the nine Republican, uh, Congress here in our state. But there's 54, thereabouts, Congressmen and women in California, but only nine of them are Republicans. But there, we're wasting 260 million, up to. That don't sound right. I, I think money could be spilt, spent elsewhere, and follow what we had in our constitution on how it is being, uh, uh, picking our, our, our lines for our different representatives, uh, among state and federal, and, uh, also, uh, our local, making our, our, uh, districts and stuff. But it would don't make sense that they worry about Texas so much, what they do, but they don't realize that Texas gained a bunch of Congress people, a, a new Congress in their state, from the census. Why is that? The red, the blue states lost population, especially California and New York, and went to the red states, and then, then they in turn, the, the red, the blue states lost, uh, position of Congress in their state, and the red states gained. But they're talking about the janitor, janitor mentoring a little bit. You have Massachusetts, 36% Republicans, no, excuse me, uh, 36% Republicans, but no seats, zero, all Democrats. You have Connecticut, 42% Republicans, zero seats in that state. You have New Mexico, 46% Republicans, zero seats. New Hampshire, 48% Republicans, zero. I can go on and on, on these different states. Hawaii, 38 Republicans, zero seats. There's been gerrymandering going on forever, yeah, i- i- on the Democratic sides, but like the saying goes, if Republican does it, all hell breaks loose. And, uh, you can see that, you know, our governor is really stretching his hands out since he's going to run for president, that he wants to become a middle, a, a, a middle-of-the-road politician. Uh, I think he just kind of spoke out in, uh, what he truly means. He's there dividing the people, and we are dividing the people. It's a shame. We should be all united and working together. Yes, we have constructive criticism, but it's good, but when you have it just one-sided, for instance, California, when you, when Democrats have super majority on every legislative seats, executive seats, and judicial, is California any better? Is it, I say it's a whole lot worse. We need to change that, and I'm hoping that all the people in Cali- in California, the voters and stuff, will see through that and vote their minds and their hearts, and hopefully we can get, come up with a better California on, on there, because, um, I'm sure is not seeing it. Businesses are leaving, less jobs, or pe- our, our, our youth is leaving California to pursue a better jobs in other states, not here, staying here. So, I, I see, uh, that we need to somehow counteract it and make California sane again. And, um, another thing, too, is that, uh, we have problems that goes back before, on the homeless a little bit, before, uh, before Jesus' time. There's always been homeless, but he always preached to take care of them. And the churches, our civic clubs, keep, help, you know, are, are doing it, and we are doing it. And we, and, and, and there's homeless too, in this, in this, uh, in our city, but some of them like it. I don't want to mention names, I know of some, uh, two homeless that have apartments right over here by the Save More, real nice apartments, but they stay dirty and clean, uh, dirty and, and rough-looking, because they don't get, you don't get money when you're, when you look pretty nice on a road collecting money. They, they do that in order to collect more money. They want to be that way. They're happy. But then there are those that really, truly need help. And those that truly, really need help, they're the ones that we really, truly need to help them and make it work, and give them the right guidance to, uh, give them the direction to go to, uh, better themselves. But, um, that's all I have to say. I know it's kind of a rant and stuff, but it's kind of frustrating, it's on the news and things, and that we're, that, uh, it's, it's never the other party's fault, and then we, and we just need to look at each, each, at each, ourselves, and see who is at fault and what can we do to make the state a better state. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Councilman Waldrop?
I don't have much. I'd just like to, uh, say how I'm sorry I am about Kathy's Ron. I too lost my, uh, grandson about a month ago or so, and I think God's with both of them.
All righty. Mayor Pro-Tam Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm going to keep it light, and I'll finish with a little bit of sappiness. Uh, I want to, I think it's important that we point out that the housing element that we have talked about tonight only covers the city proper, right? Only touches on the city of Taft where those boundaries lie. But I don't think there's a single person that doesn't look at Ford City, South Taft, or anywhere else, and doesn't think that's Taft. We share the same zip code, for God's sake. I lived there most of my life. And so, a lot of folks will have a lot of input, and I think it's wonderful, but a lot of times, it's, it's not directed at the right place. And so, one of the things that I hope the folks who are, you know, engaged here, or any other point in the, uh, the public engagement process for the housing development update, I hope those folks are able to access, or did access, those feedback forums and those, those opportunities to provide information and insight at the county level. I can't say that I'm aware that the county did or didn't do that, looking at the areas on the west side that are pretty highly populated and obviously very, uh, very much in the county control as opposed to the local municipality. I'm sure there are spots in East Kern and West Kern and anywhere else that are very much the same. So, I would definitely like to send some encouragement to the folks at the county level to consider the, the census-designated places, or the county enforced areas, I don't know what the proper term is, to kind of do that type of engagement. And likewise, I would encourage those folks in those areas to please reach out to the county where it's appropriate for that feedback. Not that it's not welcome, and not that we wouldn't love hearing from you, but at the end of the day, there's only so much we can do. Our boundaries are what we are, and we can't help you if you're outside those, truthfully, right? I just wanted to point that out. Uh, and I'll finish with this, is I, I think we've had a lot of loss in the community. At least it felt like the last year, and I don't know why the last year feels so much more profound than any year prior. That's probably just, uh, something of, you know, it being closer to today than it was, you know, a year ago. But it just seems like we've had a lot of loss. And I, I would want to remind everyone, you know, when you look around, hug your loved ones and your friends, cherish those little moments, because you never know when it might be your last one. If you've got a fence that you built up, or they've built up, do your best to mend it, because there may be not an opportunity in the future to reach back across and do those sorts of things. Make those connections, and, uh, you don't want to live with those types of regrets. And, and I'll say this about Ron, um, I got to know Ron much more when I was a young adult, and I'm not so, I guess I wouldn't say I'm that old, but I'm not a young adult anymore. And I, I'm really thankful that I got to know Ron as an adult in those times of my life, because he was a straight shooter. Like, would, didn't pull any punches, told you exactly what he thought and why. Right or wrong, that was his opinion, and I apprec- I appreciate that. I think we, we miss a lot of that, like, the lack of subtleties, I think, is one of the best things about Ron, right? Now, he could put it on if he wanted to, absolutely, but if he trusted you and he wanted you to know the truth, he's not going to pull punches, and I wish we had a little bit more like that. So, the world's going to be a little bit more PC without a guy like Ron in, uh, in our community. I am very thankful for all of his service in the various ways around the community, and for you guys as a whole, as community members. Uh, I hope someone is able to carry that torch a little bit, you know, maybe with a little bit more subtlety here and there, but, uh, God bless you guys all. We're sorry for your loss, and we wish you nothing but the best. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. School's in session, everybody. Anybody who's a teacher, or superintendent, or a student knows that. School is in session. You see it all over the streets, early in the mornings and in the afternoons. Bear that in mind. I'm not sure why. I know kids learn how to read. I know they do. I swear they do. And I think those signs that say, "Push this button," they're written in English, because I've stopped and pushed those buttons. I see kids across those streets and never touch the button. I actually pull over, park my vehicle, and go push the cotton-picking button, just to make sure those things work. And they do. Ha! By golly, they do. I wish, uh, maybe we could remind them somehow, some way. But it's incumbent upon all of us to be careful and to be diligent, and make sure we don't run over anybody, because the kids are out. And no, they don't push the button. We're talking about, we're talking about a bunch of kids that grow up doing nothing but that, for heaven's sakes. It doesn't make any sense to me, but it is what it is. So, uh, we discussed the housing issue at length. I can tell you that some years ago, and we have addressed that for some years, as has the entire state of California, we brought experts from the mission here and asked them, in their professional opinion, to tell us about the homeless issues on the west side. Like you said, Mayor Pro-Tam, it's not just city of Taft proper, it's west side. And at that time, I remember them saying, "Mayor, you have 37 or 38 of them." That was some years ago. And I said, "Okay, in your professional opinion, how many are you going to be able to get, to get into that van and get into a program and get sober and change their lives?" I said, "37 or 38." And he thought for a second, and he said, "Nah, maybe two." I said, "Two? For all your efforts?" He said, "Yeah, that's right." He said, "The rest of them, they like their life. They like the way it is. They don't want to be sober." So, Taft is a safe city when they lay down under the influence of whatever they lay down on. They don't get rolled, they don't get raped, they don't get beat up. Taft's a generous community. They say if they stick their hands out often enough, somebody's going to give them some money. They can get three squares a day, every day, seven days a week, from individuals who are trying to help. So, that means every nickel they get their hands on, they can spend on either alcohol or drugs. So, they like their life, okay? No, and, and if I get hate mail saying, "Not everybody is out there," that's right, not. All we can do is enlist the help of the experts, ask them to educate us, and I'm telling you, the last time they came here, those were the numbers. So, just wanted to remind everybody of that. We will continue to try to help, but the state of California has poured some $27 billion into homelessness in the last five years, and last year, the homeless population just grew more than it did any year prior. So, I don't think just throwing money at it is the answer, folks. I don't. All right. Moving along, planning commission reports. Do we have planning commission reports this evening?
Good evening, Mayor Nor, members of the council. We actually have held two planning commission meetings between the last, uh, report and this one, so I'm going to cover both of them fairly quickly. Um, our first meeting, um, in June, no, July, pardon me, um, was a, a reorganization meeting. I was again elected as the chair. Dennis Schurz was elected as the vice chair. Um, we did approve one item, a CUP, for, uh, a telecommunications facility on city land. And then, the last meeting we attended, I actually had a long presentation for you on the housing element, but I figure you probably don't really need to hear it again. So, um, we did approve the housing element and recommended adoption to you folks. So, there's really not much to say about it, is there?
All right. No, you guys have done a great deal of work, and, uh, the work product speaks for itself.
Um, I am, uh, again, also saddened by the loss of Ron. When I first was appointed to the planning commission, Ron was the chair. Learned quite a bit about Taft from just hearing him talk to the individual people coming in. Uh, my experience, of course, is at the beginning end of a planning process, and Ron's significant experience on the other end, the building part of it, was very valuable to me. I learned quite a bit about the process that I hadn't learned before, and I'll definitely miss having him on the planning commission. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Item number five, department reports. Do we have any department reports this evening? Seeing none. Item number six, city manager statements. City Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to, uh, offer my condolences to the Orne family on the loss of Ron. Um, all I can say is that it was one hell of a hard-working man, that man right there. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Item number seven, city attorney statements. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No statement.
All right. Uh, item number eight, future gender requests. Gentlemen?
I do have one, Mr. Mayor, and I will not take credit for this, because it's not my idea, but I wanted to make sure I s- pass this along. Uh, uh, I don't know how many years ago it was, maybe five years ago, we did, I think, believe it was a proclamation or resolution, kind of honoring the service of Dr. Ross, the local veterinarian. Uh, the proposal that was given to me, and I want to make today, is that we do something similar for Dr. Tang. Dr. Tang is, um, a longtime Taft resident. He's literally still going to his medical office every day. I'm not sure that that's going to stop until the world makes him stop, which is great. So, I would propose that we do something similar. I don't know exactly the details, but I can help get details for whatever that looks like.
I would concur with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any others, gentlemen? None? Okay, then. We'll move on to consent calendar items nine through 12. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none, those items are: item number nine, the minutes for the August 5th, 2025 regular meeting. Item number 10, the payment of bills, some $140,000 worth. Item number 11, the purchase of used vehicle for Public Works Department. Recommendation is a motion to authorize the city manager or his designee to purchase a used truck for the Public Works Department for a total cost not to exceed $20,000, and authorize the city manager or designee to execute all documents and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 1506 OC 3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Item number 12, approving a resolution for California State of Good Repair Program for fiscal year 2025-2026 for use and application of $16,632 for transit projects. The recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving the Proposed Transit Program List for the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 California Senate Bill 1 State of Good Repair Program, and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 1506 OC 3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. Any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
None here.
Well, I'm going to remove item number 12. So, at this time, I would consider a motion to approve consent calendar items nine, 10, and 11. Still moved? Madam Clerk, I have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Bryant?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shavira?
Yes.
Mayor Nor?
Yes. That's approved on a five-o vote. Item number twelve, City Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Taft is an eligible project sponsor and may receive state transit assistant funding from the State of Good Repair Account now or sometime in the future for transit project. Statutes related to the state-funded transit projects require a local or regional implementing agent to abide by various regulations. The city submitted a project list, which included replacement of rolling stock with transit buses, but the list can be updated or modified as transit needs change.
Thank you, City Manager Jones. I read the recommended action, which I will read again, which is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft Approving the Proposed Transit Project List for the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 California Senate Bill 1 State of Good Repair Program, and find that the activity is not a project per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 1506 OC 3 and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. I would entertain that motion. So moved? I'll second that motion. The reason I pulled this item is because we needed to update the amounts. So, in order to make things clear and reflect the truth, the amount is not sixteen thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars, it is sixteen thousand seven hundred and two dollars. So, all of that discussion for seventy bucks, but hey, it was well worth it. So, now that you know why I pulled that item, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this, gentlemen?
I just have one quick question. Based on what I'm seeing here, we've already submitted a request for, or an application with these projects included, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's required that there be a resolution, and it's an apportionment, so we kind of let the money add up, so we can have a viable project.
And we're talking about rolling stock replacements generally, or other transit-related purchases that amount to that sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
That is correct. So, we'll hang on to that money, and added some other money, at some point in time, we'll be able to do something with it.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shavira?
Yes.
Mayor Nor?
Yes. That passes on a five-o vote. At this time, we will recess the Taft City Council meeting, and we will go to the TPFA meeting for this evening.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for, like, a five-minute recess to find ourselves in the restroom, if you need to go?
Yes. And you know what? I'll tell you what. I'm going to do something just a little bit different, because we have to go to this other meeting, and that takes time.
Apologize.
We are going to adjourn this evening's meeting, this evening's city council meeting, in the honor of Ron Orin. Now, I wanted the Orin family to be here for that, but I don't know that they want to stick around for the rest of this meeting. So, just to let you all know, and everybody spoke of Ron, and there's good reason. Ron was a big part of our community. I had many spirited conversations with Ron. And everybody knows me as Dave, but Ron knew me as David, and he would refer to me as David. And as we made points back and forth, I would always look forward to hearing that. Now, David, that was it. His points were always made, well-made. And we agreed on a great many things. We disagreed on a few things. I would make my point, and Ron would make his point. And he always did a good job of it. It didn't always sway my opinion, but nonetheless, he respected mine, I respected his. That was the kind of guy Ron was. So, he would do just that, for any of us here. And that's what made him who he was. So, Ron, we're going to miss you. I'm going to miss those conversations. So, in honor of Ron Orin, we will adjourn this meeting after we attend to the rest of this meeting. So, we're going to take a short biology break.
That's what I was waiting for.
We'll be back in five. We are ready, everybody?
How's my hair?
You always look nice. Okay, we're back. And it is time to recess the city council meeting and go to the Taft Public Finance Authority. So, I'll hand the gavel over to...
Thank you, kind sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
I will, since it's hot, I will remind folks, proper hydration is important. I will also remind you that proper hydration may have unintended side effects, timing-wise. So, all right. This meeting of the Taft Public Financing Authority is our annual meeting, August 19th, 2025, here after the city council meeting is officially open. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Bryant?
Yeah, here. Yes.
Board Member Shavira?
Here.
Board Member Nor?
Here.
Board Member Cryer?
Here.
Board Member Waldrop?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number one on the agenda tonight is seating of new directors. The recommended action is a statement by the Deputy Secretary of the Authority. This statement, Mr. Nor, do you want to read this, or is this supposed to be me? I'm really confused now.
Uh, it's supposed to be your turn.
Ah, perfect.
Dave Nor and Orchard Cryer were elected to the City of Taft City Council and were duly seated as members of the City Council in December 2024. Article 2, Section 2 of the authority bylaws provide, among other things, that A, directors shall be the members of the City Council of the City of Taft; B, directors shall hold office for a term that is coextensive with their respective terms as members of the City Council; C, each appointed director shall hold office until the expiration of the term for which appointed or until its successor has been appointed by the city. Mr. Nor and Mr. Cryer have executed the oath of office as members of the City Council and are hereby declared seated as directors of the Taft Public Financing Authority.
Perfect. And I believe with that, this item is concluded. Wonderful. No action taken, except for the people who have real power, which is fantastic. Item number two is going to be the election of officers. We're going to take, excuse me, I believe we have to seat two folks here, based on the first item listed, and the other two, the appointment of the secretary and the appointment of the treasurer, the clerk and the finance director? No. Okay, so, we have, very good. Thank you for the clarification. So, at this time, I would entertain nominations for a chairman, a vice chairman, a secretary, and/or a treasurer, if anyone has interest.
I would nominate you, Mayor Pro Tem, Josh Bryant, to continue to serve as the chairman of the Financing Authority.
Thank you. So, we have a nomination for chairman. Do we have a nomination for a vice chair?
And I would nominate Mr. Dave Nor for vice chairman.
Very good. Do we have any other nominations, there, gentlemen? Perfect. So, should I do it all at once, or can I do those now? Perfect. Let's do it all at once. So, who would like to serve as the secretary of the Taft Public Financing Authority? Or who is it currently, I think I should ask? Mr. Waldrop, would you like to continue in that capacity?
Sure.
Wonderful.
It's a hard job.
That's right. We meet once a year. And our treasurer is likely Mr. Cryer, because, or maybe it's Mr. Shavira. I'm not positive.
I believe it's Mr. Cryer, because Shavira was your, it was, it could have been mayor.
Okay.
Because those were the only two left.
Well, of you two gentlemen who are left, would one of you take particular interest in this? I'm pretty sure there's zero work outside of showing up to these meetings.
You could fire it outside.
He's tough, Carlos. Be careful.
I'm not a fighter.
Perfect. All right. So, we have nominations of myself as chairman, Mr. Nor as vice chairman, Mr. Waldrop to continue as secretary, and Mr. Shavira as treasurer. At this time, I would accept such a motion.
Motion.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second. Motion coming from Waldrop, second from Nor. Do we have to do a roll call here? Perfect. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Bryant?
Yes.
Board Member Shavira?
Yes.
Board Member Nor?
Yes.
Board Member Cryer?
Yes.
Board Member Waldrop?
Yes.
Perfect. And those nominations are accepted on a five-o vote. Item number three is citizens' request and public comment. Since there's no one here outside of Jerry, I'm going to skip that item. No one protests. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Items four through six. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member of the authority requests specific items to be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after regular business items. Those items are, item number four, the approval of minutes from the August 20th, 2024 meeting. The recommended action there is to approve as submitted. Item number five is the comparative analysis of changes in fund balances, revenue bonds of 2019, police station, and redevelopment projects. The recommendation there is a motion to receive and file the TPFA comparative analysis of changes in fund balances, revenue bonds of 2019, police station and redevelopment project, and find the activity is not a project per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15061B3. Item six there is the ratification, excuse me, and authorization of actions by officers of the TPFA, the Taft Public Financing Authority. Recommendation there is a motion to ratify officer actions on behalf of the Taft Public Financing Authority for the 2024-2025 fiscal year, and authorize officers to perform these duties on behalf of the corporation for the upcoming 2025-2026 fiscal year, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 1506OC3 and Section 15378 of those SEQA guidelines. Gentlemen, does anybody like to remove those items from the consent agenda? Good. Seeing none, I will accept a motion to accept consent agenda items four through six.
Motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Nor?
Second.
Second from Mr. Shavira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None of extensions. That passes on a five-o vote. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
All right. From the recess, thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you.
And that is the end of the open session portion of this evening's meeting. This council will be going into closed section. Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision B of Section 54956. Point nine D, one potential case. Once again, we adjourn this meeting in honor of Ron Orin, who was heavily involved in our community, and that's the way we ought to be, everybody. Be a part of your community. I think Ron Orin was on the planning commission beginning in 2012, thirteen years under his belt. So, God bless him, God bless his family, God bless America.
Amen.
This meeting is adjourned.
Godspeed, Ron.